... and instructions for cleaning roads. You can help keep Tampa Bay beautiful by adopting your own road today. To learn more, visit hcflgov.net/cleanhc.
Tampa Bay is like no place else.
Wait, you can't recycle the bag. You have to throw it away.
Proper recycling keeps it that way for everyone. Bags tangle in machinery and can bring sorting efforts to a halt.
No bags!
Trash the bags and keep our recycling program moving forward.
No, Mommy, no plastic bags!
Do your part to keep our recycling bag-free. Trash the tanglers or return them to participating retailers. For more information, visit TampaBayRecycles.org.
Flossing in the morning is a really great way to keep your teeth healthy and start the day. But when you're through, here's what you do: Throw it in the trash, don't flush it. There's a problem lots of people don't know called sanitary sewer overflow. A condition buried deep in the ground. Inside a pipe where bedcloths are found. It's a problem we can all help solve. So throw it in the trash, don't flush it. Baby wipe fender just caught in pads. Paper towels, dental floss, clog up bad. Medicines, kitty litter, cotton swabs, hair. Throw 'em in the trash, don't flush it. It just takes a second to do the right thing. So toss it and let's keep our pipes clean. Throw it in the trash, don't flush it. If it's not toilet paper, don't flush it. Even if it says you can, don't flush it. If you're having any doubts, don't flush it. One more time, don't flush it.
This is Dave. Dave doesn't know his home's flood zone and was not able to heed flood warnings. Dave and his home are soaked. This is Noah. Noah is an informed citizen. He was warned in advance about potential flooding in his area. Noah took precautions. Noah is dry.
And I saved the animals, too.
Good job, Noah. When it comes to flood warnings, be like Noah, not like Dave. For more information, visit hcflgov.net. Be safe, be informed, know your flood zone.
Oh, man, here comes Arnie again.
Check this out.
It's Arnie. What are you doing? You made a mess in my hallway.
You don't need superpowers to be a hero. Help make Hillsborough...
So let's say that Tim here was returning to his vehicle only to find it missing. He may think it was either stolen or towed. Let's not worry too much, Tim. Hillsborough County wants you to know the rules and regulations should you find yourself stuck in this unfortunate situation. Here are a few rules and tips you should know. Rule number one: Permission to tow. Towing services need permission to tow from private property and must post signs with telephone numbers saying that the trespassing vehicles will be removed. If your vehicle is missing, look for a sign and call the number. Rule number two: Communication. As soon as your vehicle is delivered to the local towing facility, towing services must notify local law enforcement within a 30-minute timeframe. And they must return calls from vehicle owners within one hour. Helpful tip number one: Law enforcement can help motorists determine if their vehicle has been towed. If you don't see a posted sign, call the authorities on the non-emergency line. Rule number three: Retrieving your vehicle during a tow. Most people are unaware that you could still retrieve your vehicle while connected to the tow truck. For a drop fee of no more than half the towing rate, the tow truck operator must release the vehicle to its owner. When it comes to payment, tow truck drivers must accept the following: debit, cash, cashier's check, or money order. Rule number four: Personal property. If the owner is unable to pay the drop fee and their vehicle is in the hands of the towing company, owners still have the right to retrieve personal property from their vehicle. Helpful tip number two: Having a registration and title in your name will make it easier to recover your vehicle. Tow companies will not hand over the vehicle if you are not the registered owner, unless you have an original notarized affidavit signed by the registered vehicle owner. Remember, Hillsborough County is here to help you. For complete detailed information on towing rules and regulations, please visit us at hcflgov.net/consumerprotection or give us a call at 813-635-8316.
Is your local business or organization looking to give back to the community? Help keep our roads clean by joining the Adopt a Road program administered by Keep Tampa Bay Beautiful. Keeping our roads clean is a great way for team building as well as exposure for your business. Select the road your business wants to adopt and dispatch a team to remove litter and debris. Participants will receive two signs showing their organization's name as well as safety equipment and instructions for cleaning roads. You can help keep Tampa Bay beautiful by adopting your own road today. To learn more, visit hcflgov.net.
Flossing in the morning is a really great way to keep your teeth healthy and start the day. But when you're through, here's what you do: Throw it in the trash, don't flush it. There's a problem lots of people don't know called sanitary sewer overflow. A condition buried deep in the ground. Inside a pipe where bedcloths are found. It's a problem we can all help solve. So throw it in the trash, don't flush it. Baby wipe fender just caught in pads. Paper towels, dental floss, clog up bad. Medicines, kitty litter, cotton swabs, hair. Throw 'em in the trash, don't flush it. It just takes a second to do the right thing. So toss it and let's keep our pipes clean. Throw it in the trash, don't flush it. If it's not toilet paper, don't flush it. Even if it says you can, don't flush it. If you're having any doubts, don't flush it. One more time, don't flush it.
Tampa Bay is like no place else.
Wait, you can't recycle the bag. You have to throw it away.
Proper recycling keeps it that way for everyone. Bags tangle in machinery and can bring sorting efforts...
Welcome to a meeting of Your Planning Commission, the official local planning agency for the cities of Tampa, Temple Terrace, Plant City, and unincorporated Hillsborough County. The Planning Commission provides innovative leadership and long-range vision that contributes to the creation of a thriving, prosperous community that offers opportunity, fairness, and choice in how we live, move, learn, work, and play. For more information about the Planning Commission, please call 813-272-5940. Follow us on social media or visit our website at planhillsborough.org.
Welcome to the June 10, 2019, public hearing of the Planning Commission on the Temple Terrace Comprehensive Plan Amendments. We thank you for attending this meeting. Your comments and participation is encouraged. If you will, please sign the register at the rear of the room and turn off any devices that may be a distraction. If you wish to address the commission on a specific amendment, we ask that you please complete the appropriate public comment sheet, sign-in sheet that's in the rear of the room. When addressing the commission, please begin with your name, address, and speak directly in the microphone. For those of you who are not familiar with our process, the meeting will be conducted as follows. The agenda item will be introduced. Staff will give their presentation with a 15-minute time limit. The applicant will be given the opportunity to make a presentation with a 15-minute time limit. Following presentations, members of the public may address the Planning Commission when recognized by the chairman. Public comment will be heard for three minutes per person. The applicant will be afforded a three-minute period for rebuttal or response. Planning commissioners will then ask questions. Public comment will be closed. Then upon a motion, a second, and a discussion vote will be taken. Roll call, please.
Good evening. Powell?
Here.
Dix?
Here.
Green?
Present.
Joseph?
Here.
Cress?
Here.
Marino?
Here.
Willman?
Here.
Thrower?
Wilds?
Here.
Dickerson?
Here.
Rodriguez?
Here.
Doughty?
Here.
Thank you. You have a quorum.
We have the first City of Temple Terrace 19-01 map amendment, Mr. Mark Hudson.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, Mark Hudson, Planning Commission staff. Our staff has been processing one plan amendment for the City of Temple Terrace this cycle. As already noted by the chairperson, it's TTCPA 1901. This slide shows you the general location of the plan amendment site. It's only a couple blocks from Temple Terrace City Hall on North 52nd Street, only a quarter mile south of Fowler Avenue. 52nd Street has the unusual attribute of being the jurisdictional boundary between the City of Temple Terrace and the City of Tampa. This aerial shows you a little bit closer in of exactly how the properties of this plan amendment have currently been developed, and those are the surrounding area. The plan amendment area is surrounded by the dashed lavender line. On the north parcel, it's two parcels. On the north parcel is 14 units of multifamily housing. And on the south parcel is vacant. To the north of this plan amendment site is, has been developed with a commercial use, currently a public supermarket. To the east and south in Temple Terrace are small professional offices. And across the street to the west in the City of Tampa are two single-family detached homes and apartment complex. By way of a little bit of background about this plan amendment, it was privately initiated in a small scale, coming in at just 1.72 acres. The applicant has requested to go from office institutional to residential 18, primarily to develop the property out with multifamily uses with a small office. I've taken some photos of the area to give you a little bit of context of how the area currently looks. This is the parcel looking east that's part of the plan amendment site, that is of the two parcels that went to the south. This is the parcel to the north that has the 14 multifamily units on it. As part of this application, the applicant is proposing to update these units and add additional units on the vacant parcel. This is 52nd Street looking north. You can see the character of the roadway. In particular, I just point out that on the Temple Terrace side, there are some pedestrian amenities, including the sidewalk as you see here. In the City of Tampa, there's two single-family detached homes. This is across 52nd Street to the west, as I noted earlier. When you look at the future land use map, which I'll show in a moment, this in the City of Tampa has a land use designation of R-35 in the county. This is the apartment complex in the City of Tampa, again across 52nd Street from the plan amendment site in Tampa. And this has a R-50 land use in the City of Tampa. And I noticed that within Temple Terrace, to the south and to the east are professional offices. And this gives you an idea of how those offices look that are adjacent to the plan amendment This shows you the close context of this site to the commercial development, and particularly the public supermarket. This area is developed with pedestrian amenities. However, you can see from the slide, the residents, the current residents have found a shorter path. This Publix is actually going to go under extensive renovations. And Temple Terrace staff has been working with the Publix, and it is my understanding that this path is actually going to be improved to a sidewalk as part of that redevelopment of that Publix for these residents and other residents on 52nd Street. This is the future land use map as it stands today. You can see the crimson color of the office institutional, not only of this plan amendment site, but also to the east and to the south. To the north, again, is the commercial area that is Publix. And to the west is the brown and, brown and the darker brown of the R-35 and the R-50 that is in the City of Tampa. And this shows you if this plan amendment was approved, how that land use map would change, more similar to the color palette that currently is in the City of Tampa. What are the potential impacts if this was approved? It would increase the potential dwelling units from 15 units up to 30. There is also, it meets the locational for the bonus intensity zone overlay. And there's about a dozen or so development standards that if they comply with, they can get a 25% bonus on top of that, which would bring the dwelling units up to 38. As my understanding, the applicant does hope to work through that process for some additional units. You can see that the commercial, the office institutional uses and the neighborhood commercial uses actually go down based on this, from 37,000 square feet down to 26. So there's an increased potential for residential development. And correspondingly, there's a lowering amount of the allowable square footage for a neighborhood office commercial. Our staff did review this per the Imagine 2040 Temple Terrace Comprehensive Plan. The full policies are in your packet, but in particular, I would note that we compared this with the future land use policies, those dealing with neighborhood conservation, community development, multimodal corridors, major activity centers, and particularly, it's close and direct proximity to Fowler Avenue, which this type of higher-density residential use is encouraged in that activity area. Also in compliance with growth management, citywide redevelopment strategies, the provision of public facilities and housing. And our staff did feel that it was compatible with the surrounding areas and also within the vision established by Temple Terrace City Council for this area of Temple Terrace. We are here today to garner your recommendation to transmit to Temple Terrace City Council. We have not established the hearing date yet for Temple Terrace City Council to hear this. The applicant is working on his corresponding plan, plan development, rezoning, and site plan. And its city staffs hope that both of these documents will be ready to be reviewed by the city council in unison. Of course, once that date has been identified, it will be duly advertised with signage and legal advertisement in the, in the paper. With that, our staff, the Planning Commission recommends that TTCPA 1901 be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine 2040 Temple Terrace Comprehensive Plan and afford this recommendation to Temple Terrace City Council. I would note that the applicant is here and also Temple Terrace staff is here to answer any questions that I'm unable to answer.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to speak? Yes. Please state your name and address.
Evaila Ivanoff, 1280 Wildwood Lakes. We do recommend, concur with staff's recommendations, and I'm just here for any questions you guys may have.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions from commissioners? Oh, excuse me, public comment first. Commissioners? No questions? Okay. We can, we can ask for a motion now?
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Powell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion that we find TTCPA 19-01 to be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine 2040 Comprehensive Plan and forward it on to Temple Terrace City Council.
Some discussion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sign "aye." Are there any opposes? Thank you. The motion is carried. That closes the public hearing for Temple Terrace. Welcome to the June 10, 2019, public hearing of the Planning Commission on Plant City Comprehensive Plan Amendments. We thank you for attending this meeting. Your comments and participation is encouraged. If you will, please sign the register at the rear of the room and turn off any devices that may be a distraction. If you wish to address the commission on a specific amendment, we ask that you please complete the appropriate public comment sign-in sheet at the rear of the room. When addressing the commission, please begin with your name, address, and speak directly into the microphone. For those of you who are not familiar with our process, the meeting will be conducted as follows. The agenda item will be introduced. Staff will give their presentation with a 15-minute time limit. The applicant will be given the opportunity to make a presentation with a 15-minute time limit. Following presentations, members of the public may ask the Planning Commission when recognized by the chairman. Public comment will be heard for three minutes per person. The applicant will be afforded a three-minute period for rebuttal or response. Planning commissioners will then ask questions. Public comment will be closed. Then upon a motion, a second, and discussion for a vote will be taken. Roll call, please.
Good evening. Powell?
Here.
Dix?
Here.
Green?
Present.
Joseph?
Here.
Cress?
Here.
Marino?
Here.
Willman?
Here.
Thrower?
Wilds?
Here.
Dickerson?
Here.
Rodriguez?
Here.
Doughty?
Here.
Thank you. You have a quorum.
Future land use map amendment, Mr. Hudson?
Again, Mark Hudson, Planning Commission staff. We have processed two plan amendments for the City of Plant City this cycle. The first one is PCCPA 1807. Both these plan amendments have a lot of attributes in common, and you'll see that as I go through my presentations. This first one is, as you can see from the vision map of Plant City, this is located in the northeastern portion of the municipality. It's north and south of East Newsome Road, east of Paul Buckman Highway, south of Williams Road, and west of North Wilder Road. Moving in a little bit with this aerial shows you the actual plan amendment area that's affected by this application, surrounded by the dashed lavender line. To give you a little bit of idea, the East Newsome Road is the road that partially bisects this plan amendment site that comes in from North Wilder Road. It's about 107 acres, which I'll, I'll show a slide of that in a moment. It's an active agricultural uses. To the northeast, excuse me, to the northwest, south, and partially to the east, it is already surrounded by the municipal boundaries of Plant City. This is a pending annexation, voluntary annexation. There's about 1,400 linear strip of land that will remain in unincorporated county that it does a butt to it up on the northeastern portion of the site. And I'll see if I can show you that with the cursor. It's this area right here. By way of a little bit of background of this site and this plan amendment, it was privately initiated. There is a voluntary annexation that's going through the process with their staff and city commission. It is a regular-scale plan amendment coming in, as I already noted, 100, over 107 acres. Currently, it has a Hillsborough County Residential 1 land use, and the applicant is asking for Plant City Residential 6. The area that surrounds this, for the most part, as I noted earlier and what you'll see on future slides, is a development called North Park Isles. And both this plan amendment and the next plan amendment, it is the applicant's desire to bring this land in and to augment the land area that already is part of that proposed development in Plant City. To give you a little idea of how the site looks like today, as I mentioned, it is an active agricultural uses. And this is looking south from East Newsome Road. And this is looking north. This is looking west from the terminus of East Newsome Road. This is looking east on that road that I previously noted, as you, the way to garner access to the site. Looking west, and this is leading into the plan amendment site. And this is about that 1,400-foot area that will, that butts the site, that will remain in unincorporated county. These are those half dozen or so homes that their backyards back up onto the site. I will note that everyone within 250 feet of the plan amendment site was notified by direct mailing. And also, of course, this meeting was advertised on our website. I did not receive any calls pertaining, from any citizens pertaining to this particular amendment. This shows you one of the half dozen or so homes that, that will remain and abut the This is the future land use map as it stands today. You can see the light yellow and dark yellow in Plant City, which is the residential 4 and the residential 6. And the light green color of the residential 1 in unincorporated county. And again, it stands a little bit more striking on this map than the aerial of how this actually to the northeast, excuse me, northwest, south, and partially to the east, already, lands are already in Plant City, and this is annexing in to complete that, that grid. And this shows you the change, if approved by Plant City, City Commission, to the darker yellow color of residential 6, which allows six dwelling units per acre. What is the potential maximum build-out in intensity based on this application? Currently, you could build 107 dwelling units in the county. And bringing this in Plant City and garnering this land use, if approved by Plant City City Commission, it would go up to 645. In either instance, it does not meet locational criteria for the county nor Plant City, so non-residential uses would not be entertained. Our staff did review this by the Imagine 2040 Plant City Comprehensive Plan. In particular, we looked at neighborhood conservation, residential development, enhanced hometown charm, their policies concerning annexation, the protection of natural environment, growth management, both for general development and redevelopment strategies, the provision of public facilities, which are being upgraded along Sam Allen Road in anticipation of this development, and agricultural compatibility. Also, we felt it's compatible with the other areas, particularly those, obviously, that are going to be in the controlled PD development site plan for North Park Isles, and also by the code of Plant City, which will require buffering between this development and those areas that remain in unincorporated county. Give you a little idea of the timeline. We're here to seek your recommendation today. This will be presented basically in this form on Wednesday, June 26, at 8:30 in the morning at City Hall to garner their planning board's recommendation. And the city commission's transmittal hearing is scheduled for July 22. We anticipate this coming back in front of the city commission more than likely in the month of September if this schedule is maintained. And with that, based on our analysis, Planning Commission staff recommends that PCCPA 1807 be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine 2040 Plant City Comprehensive Plan and afford this recommendation to the Plant City Commission. I would also note that the applicant's agent is here if you have any questions of them. And Chair, the chairman, I would just like to note that this is the conclusion of my presentation and stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to speak?
Good evening. Truett Gardner, 400 North Ashley Drive, Gardner Brewer Law Firm. And Mark has done a phenomenal job in his presentation. We've worked closely with Planning Commission staff as well as the Saint, I'm sorry, Plant City officials. And excited about this. This is really just the expansion of North Park Isles. And so we're here to answer any questions. I've got Steve Lewis with Eisenhower Property Group, as well as Cynthia Spidel with King. So here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Public comment? Planning commissioners, are there any questions, comments?
Sorry. Amber Dickerson with Hillsborough County Schools. We just wanted to go on record stating that there may be future capacity issues in this area, so we just wanted the applicant to know that.
And our staff did advise the applicant of that, and we've had some joint meetings with City, Plant City staff as well. So I think everyone's aware that there are issues dealing with school capacity, particularly, I believe, for high school and elementary. And when this development comes online and they go through that process, they'll have to comply with their concurrency process that's articulated in Plant City's comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Mark, I just have one question. What's the larger community? You said this is north?
North Park Isles. There, I, there's already a development that has been approved in Plant City. They're working through the engineering right now, particularly dealing with, you know, dealing with stormwater and public utilities and that type of aspects of development, plating the property. Currently, it's approved for just over 1,300 units. This plan amendment would bring another 107 acres into this potential development, and the plan amendment that you're going to hear in a few minutes would bring another 128 acres into it.
Can you go back to your slide, the, the map that, that, I think it was the future land use map? Or proposed future land use?
This one here?
Okay, so...
They want me to show you where North Park Isles is?
Right.
If you follow my cursor, can you see my cursor?
Yes.
Basically, North Park Isles is all this area in here. All this area in here, all down here, and all up here.
Okay. All right.
It's basically, almost completely surrounds this area, except for that 1,400 linear feet of that development along Wilder Loop Road.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Are there any other questions? Public comments will be closed, and I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Madam Chairman, I would move that we find Plant City Plan Amendment PCCPA 1807 consistent with the Imagine 2040 Plant City Comprehensive Plan, and then forward this to the Plant City Commission.
Motion by Commissioner Dix, and second by Commissioner Powell. All those in favor of that motion, which we saw known by the same aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposes to that? Motion passed. Thank you very much, Mr. Hudson.
I'll go on to the next plan amendment. Let me skip ahead here a little bit on the slides. Again, Mark Hudson, Planning Commission staff. As I said, this plan amendment has a lot of similar attributes to the previous one, and you'll note this as I go through my presentation. This is a little bit north of the one you just previously heard. Generally located north of East Newsome Road, east of Paul Buckman Highway, south of Williams Road, and west of North Wilder Road. And you can see the star, again, it's located in the northeastern quadrant of the city of Plant City. Again, it involves a pending voluntary annexation. This shows you the plan amendment site in question, surrounded by the dashed lavender line. You can see the jurisdictional boundaries in the dashed blue line, and those lands that are encircled by the dashed blue line to the south, that's the part of North Park Isles. The remaining lands to the west, north, and east are in unincorporated county, will remain there for, for, for the foreseeable future. Predominantly been developed with agricultural uses and large-lot, single-family homes in unincorporated county. As we have a little bit of background, again, this was privately initiated, a voluntary annexation, again, a regular plan amendment. This is a little bit larger than the previous one, at 128 acres. However, the request is the same, to go from unincorporated Hillsborough County Residential 1 to Plant City Residential 6. Unlike the last plan amendment site, this one is not in what I would call active agricultural uses, it's being used as pastureland, and this shows you a little bit how the site looks today. And I wanted to go around where I could and show you a little bit of the character of the area, particularly to the east, north, and west, those areas that will remain in unincorporated county. Those areas to the south are currently undeveloped. This is looking north on Wilder Road, near Midway Road, which is the, uh, the major intersection that is, that is close to this plan amendment site. This is looking north on Native Gardens Drive, this is on the, um, western portion of the property. And Williams Road is north of this plan amendment site. These are large lots that are quite deep, but this gives you an idea of some of the homes that have been built along Williams Road. A couple of examples. This is looking north on Wilder Road. Again, many lands are still in agriculture use or large-lot residential uses. Another example of a home on Wilder Road. This shows you the future land use map as it stands today. You can see the dark yellow color of Plant City, there's residential 6, and the light green of residential 1 in unincorporated county. If this map amendment was approved, it would match the same color that the remainder of North Park Isles and this portion of Plant City currently have. What is its potential, it built out? Again, it could have 128 units in unincorporated county. Based on six units per acre, it could have up to 600, excuse me, 769 dwelling units. Like the last plan amendment, it does not meet the location required either in Hillsborough County's plan or Plant City's plan, so its expectation would be it would be developed out exclusively with residential uses. Our staff did review this based on the Imagine 2040 Plant City Comprehensive Plan. Very similar policy selection as the past one, dealing with neighborhood conservation, residential development, enhanced hometown charm, their regulations concerning annexations, protection of the natural environment, growth management, provision of public facilities, and agricultural compatibility. We did notify everyone within 250 feet of this plan amendment site. I did receive one call from someone who resides adjacent to it. They're particularly inquiring about access on a private road that garners access to their property. I informed them that it was highly unlikely that this property would garner access from that, and facilitated their contact with Plant City staff to be part of the process of the plan development rezoning where the access points would be identified. However, I think the access to a private road would be, be, um, very unlikely to occur. Again, per the last one, there are regulations in Plant City's code that will require buffering and setbacks for this development from those existing county uses. The Planning Commission, we're garnering your recommendation here today. Again, we will be seeing the planning board with this presentation on June 26th, and the scheduled transmittal of public hearing with, um, the city commission is July 22nd. With that, our staff recommends that PCC, PCCPA 1901 be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine 2040 Plant City Comprehensive Plan and afford this recommendation to the Plant City Commission. And that concludes my rec, uh, my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and as you know, the applicant's agent is here to answer any questions as well.
Okay, thank you.
Truett Gardner, 400 North Ashley Drive, again, I'm here to answer any questions. Does the almo work? If so, Commissioner Green, you asked a great question that I look at every day, because there's so many moving parts of this, just to give you some perspective. But the area in red is the currently approved, uh, North Park Isle PD. The area in blue is what you just voted on, and the area in yellow is the subject of this application, and tomorrow we'll be submitting with the, oh, it's not up? I got the thumbs up. Almost not working. That's okay, I, I can go. Completely old-school, just hold it up. The area in red is the currently approved North Park Isle PD. The area in blue is the matter that you just heard and voted on, and then the area in yellow on the north is the subject of this application, and then tomorrow we'll be submitting a revised PD to not only amend the existing, but also include the blue and the yellow. We also, as Mark mentioned, have a pending annexation, uh, request on both parcels, and so just to give you the overall perspective of, of what's, what's going on, what's out there, this is it. So happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Commissioner Green?
Yeah.
Question. Just curious, um, this, would this be like a phase, large-scale phase development? And, and if so, would it, would it be undertaken more like a, um, a village concept?
Definitely a village concept. They're in for permit approval right now on aspects of Phase 1, so we're trying to really marry, marry some aspects of Phase 2 with Phase 1, uh, but yes, it will be developed over time. Some aspects are in process now to get moving forward, but this is all happening as quickly as we can, so we can kind of match things up and let them flow, uh, all in one development period.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Dickerson?
Um, same issues, elementary school and high school, just to let the applicant know there may be issues in the future.
Thank you.
Public comment? Commissioners have any other comments? I can entertain a motion. Commissioner Green?
Um, I'm sorry, Madam Chairman, I think I got them confused here. Okay, I'm sorry. Move for a finding of Plant City Comp Plan Amendment 1901, uh, being consistent with the, uh, Imagine 2040 Plant City Comprehensive Plan.
Second. Been moved by Commissioner Green, second by Commissioner Dix. All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sign aye?
Aye.
Are there any oppositions? Motion is carried, thank you. Oh, meeting is adjourned.